I think we're ready to get started. I've got 7:30.
Okay.
And again, I'll just remind everybody to let's not talk over each other. Let's say, announce your name, say your name, ask your question, make your comments. Try to have a very organized hearing and meeting. So I am going to call to order our public hearing, Roxbury Zoning Commission, Monday, August 24th, 2020, 7:30 PM via Zoom. Seating of members. We will seat our regular members, Kim Tester, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. And for Elaine Curly, I believe it's Candy Valari.
Did we? I'm muted, I can't talk.
Application by Mine Hill Distillery to modify special permits. All timely submitted related documents can be viewed on the Town of Roxbury website. Legal notices. We have legal notice, the Roxbury Zoning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, August 24th, 2020, 7:30 PM via Zoom. The purpose of this hearing, of the hearing is to solicit public comment on proposed modifications to the statement of use pertaining to special permits and special permit 2016-0002 granted to MH Property LLC, 69 Painter Hill Road, Washington, Connecticut for Craft Brewery, Distillery and Winery and Business Zone, D, which became effective on April 4th, 2016, and May 30th, 2016, and as modified on March 29th, 2020. This modification to the statement of use requests permission for the on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol, the addition to of one tasting location and permission to provide prepackaged food. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and heard, and written communications will be accepted. The application and supporting documents are on file in Roxbury Land Use Office and the Town Clerk's Office. The documents related to this application can be viewed on the Town of Roxbury website. That is legal notice. This one's to Peter Holbit from the zoning notice of public hearing, August 12th, 2020. Please note the attached legal notice is scheduled for Monday, August 24th to solicit public comment on the application by Mine Hill Distillery to request a modification to their special permits. The application and related documents are posted on the town website. Those are the notices. We have notices to adjoining property owners. Roxbury Land Trust, Renee David, Starrett Giddings, Kelsey, three of them, 6 Mine Hill, 13 Mine Hill, and 154 Baker Road. At this time, I would like to ask for any public comment. I have no emails to read. If anybody's on there that would like to comment, and also if any of our commissioners have questions, now's the time to ask some questions. So it's open for comment.
This is Kim Tester. I have a question, and I don't have the liquor regulations in front of me, but can you under, what's proposed for 2B? The distillery may provide free tastings and/or alcohol primarily produced on site as defined in the state liquor regulations. What does primarily mean?
Kim, is that addressed to me?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Kim, it's just like, there's similar language in for wineries that say X amount has to be produced at the actual site. So I think with wineries, it used to be 25%, now it's 50%. So you can import bulk wine, you know, top up what you have. For distilleries, it's 80%.
Okay, and so it states that in the regulation, so?
In the state regs, yeah.
State reg, okay.
So.
Would you want to state that here, or we don't have to do that, just because it's stated in the state reg?
I think that was the idea.
Okay. I had sort of a question, is not based on my own personal desires, but the language of, and I don't know what the language is for when people are applying for a bar as opposed to what this is, but what's the difference?
I'll give you a layman's definition, and having heard a bit from the town attorney, a bar can sell, you know, wine, beer, spirits, none of which are produced, you know, I have a manufacturing license. So we're, you know, from the jump, you know, five years ago, we're not a bar and we're not a package store. So basically, we're producing spirits, giving tastings, now we can sell them as well.
I thought that was important to just ask the question and have it be on the public public document.
Yep.
I'll tell you this, Bill. The 80%, if you have mixed drinks, and you add ginger ale or something, does that ginger ale consume some of that 100%?
No, Bill, the, 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 the language speaks to alcohol, alcoholic beverages, is the, the definition.
The mixture would be not on your premises.
So it's, it's not, it's, it's alcoholic beverage, so for instance, if we made a Manhattan and we put in vermouth, that would be a smaller percentage. What I really think they're driving at is a unknown or an unnamed distillery in the county was buying in their aged spirits, so wasn't produced in-state or at the distillery. So I think that's really where they're trying to get to, and I think it stems from the, the wine restrictions. Obviously, beer's made on-site typically.
But you're not restricted with that.
We're.
You know, penalized for mixes.
No, not, nor does it count in the calculation.
And how much is in a shot?
A shot, depends which bar you go to, but I think a typical is an ounce and a half.
All right, so that two ounces is a little more than a shot, not two shots. So it's not a lot of alcohol that we'd be allowing people to consume.
Yeah, this is. Exactly.
Okay. So basically, you're looking to sell, to give or sell away prepackaged food and tastings of your product. That's basically, that's, that's the summary as I see this.
I, I think it's, it's tastings, being able to sell the alcohol, and this whole, the, the, the food thing is sort of a sidebar, where it's technically, it was called a craft cafe permit, whereas now I have a manufacturer's permit.
When I see prepackaged food, it has popcorn and plain peanuts, but it could be TV dinners, too.
I have, I, I think I stated in, I, I think my cover note to the commission meeting two months ago now, that I have no interest in a restaurant. If it was going to be a restaurant, I'd have to come back and ask you guys for separate permission.
I think we're really trying to split here, I'm really trying to split here, asking questions. I have no, I have no problem what I read here.
Okay, thank you.
Alan Johnson?
Go ahead, Alan.
Now, clarify, if you have a function in the railroad station, that's considered an extension of the tasting room, is that correct?
I think we've got two different things, or I'm hearing two different things, Alan. An event is different than what we're talking about here as, as the normal operations of the tasting room.
Okay, because I was just thinking, if you had a wedding and they wanted to have a wine, champagne toast, I mean, that's a
That's, that's, that's separate.
Separate.
That's, that's a whole different thing, you know, just FYI, I've asked them if they're going to have those things now in 2021, that if we're producing, you know, vodka gin or whatever, they use ours and don't bring in Tito's, but that's, that's a, that's a contractual thing.
Okay, but, but of course, that event is a private event. I can't just wander in there and grab a glass of.
No, and, and nor does this allow us to serve, you know, champagne, beer, you know, or, you know, a tequila bar.
Right.
This is Kim, again, I have just one more, one more question. So the tasting is separate from the the drinks, is that right?
Yes. We've, we've always been allowed to provide free tastings.
Right, so it says tasting not to exceed, I'm just going to clarify, Bill, what you might have been wondering about, but the tasting not to exceed two ounces in total, but they could have more than two ounces in a drink, or, you know, multiple drinks, adding up to more than two ounces, right? It's a separate entity?
Yes.
Anyone else with any questions? I have no questions.
I have one question, this is Kim again. Do we have any concern about, I mean, this has been out and about enough for the public to have, if they had any questions or concerns to contact, does that, everybody feel that way?
It's been properly noticed.
Yeah.
Karen has noticed, is according to all our regulations of noticing. So that's about the best we can do.
Yeah, all right, just want to make sure. Things is a different world.
It was electronically noticed through the town website and everything, yeah.
And the, the butters, who would be the, potentially the most impacted have been given written.
They've been noted.
I've, I've been talking to them face-to-face for, you know, since we started the discussion back in December.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I don't see anyone else wanting to question. I have nothing to read into the record, so I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
This is Kim, I've motioned to close the public hearing.
And do I have?
I second.
I second the motion.
Yeah.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed, that's it.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Jim, do you want me to stay on for the, the regular meeting, or can I sign off?
Entirely up to you. We, we have a few things, minutes to approve and stuff like that, but you're more than welcome to stay with us.
I'll, I'll hang on then, I'll maybe top up my drink.
Sure, yeah, we're here.
All right, I'll be back in a sec.
Public hearing is closed. And we're going to move on to our special meeting because we had to cancel due to the storm. So I would like to call to order our special meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission, Monday, August 24th, 2020, 7:45 PM at the Roxbury Town Hall. Seating of members for our special meeting. We will seat Kim Tester, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller. Dave, you still with us? Dave?
Diane. Diane.
I think I heard him.
Yeah, Dave's here.
Okay. And myself, Jim Conway. And for Elaine Curly, we will seat Candy Valari. And we have no one for public comment this evening. And everybody, has everybody seen the minutes, there's three sets of minutes to approve. The first is the regular meeting dated June 8th that we need to approve.
Dave, you know that here, before you approve those, I think you talk about that the regular members absent, you have me listed. And then you have at the end that I seconded the motion to close the meeting. So I, I was at the meeting.
Okay. So we need to correct regular members absent and cross off Dave Miller because he was there.
Okay.
You'll have to, yeah, I don't know how, what you do about the, let's see, the seating of the members.
If you were there, if you were there, I probably, I imagine I seated you, it's just a typo.
Yeah, you did, you've got me, no, you've got Bill Horgan seated for me.
No, I think on the, are we talking about the June 8th?
Yes, June 8th.
Then David Miller was, was seated. Oh, no, for David Miller and himself, it says William Horgan for David Miller.
Who is speaking now?
Cheryl. It says Neil Gabriel, but it's Cheryl Rosen.
Yeah, I didn't hear you state your name.
Oh, sorry.
Well, David, you were present, correct? Okay, we will just put you in as present. Bill Horgan is going to be crossed off as being seated for you, because he wasn't. And Karen, Karen, the ball's in your court.
Yeah, I, I, that's kind of strange, I'd have to go back and look, but could, could he have been late in the meeting? And is that why we seated someone else in the beginning?
Yeah, hi, it's Candy, it might have been the issue with the connection.
Yeah, we were having, we were having a whole time hearing Dave, so I don't know if that's the meeting or not, but I can look. Either way, I'll make it, I'll fix it.
Okay, that's good.
You wouldn't, Jim, I don't think you would have seated someone if Dave was there, so.
Right, right.
So we must have.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We had an issue.
Yeah.
But anyway, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Okay, does anybody, anything else on those minutes of June 8th?
Everything, this is Kim, everything looked fine to me besides that.
Hi, this is Cheryl, there's just a slight typo on the second page, I think it's supposed to be lower Baker Road.
Where is that? Sorry.
On the second page.
Where, Cheryl?
Oh, under the CEO report.
CEO?
Yeah.
Actually, that's the Mark Low on Baker Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a name, that's a name.
You're right, I apologize, I was reading too quickly.
So that one's okay?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the changes to the seating of June 8th.
I motioned to make the adjust, or approve the minutes with the changes made to the seating.
We have a second?
I second.
Candy seconds, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? June 8th minutes are good. We have a public hearing minutes, July 13th to approve. As everybody's had a chance and everybody proper seating. Lane, David, Alan, Kim, and myself, the regulars, make motion to approve the minutes of the July 13th public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motioned and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, July 13th, all set. Now we have our regular meeting July 13th.
This is Kim. Top of the third page, something happened to me that I said, but the sentence is a little confusing. It says, Kim Tester noted that property is no longer being farmed, and this would keep historic barn from going into disrepair, so maybe noted that property farms, keep historic barns, maybe plural, historic barns? Or that Kim noted, if property is no longer being farmed, it doesn't matter if it's farmed or not, I mean, just I think maybe just make historic barn plural, might make, make changes, okay?
Okay, got that one.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else on the minutes of the regular meeting?
Yeah, just more people, that we should have had more people say happy birthday to Karen. Ising.
Happy birthday.
Never too late.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th regular meeting.
I propose to accept the minutes of the July 13th regular minutes with just a slight alteration to the one.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I second.
Alan, thank you.
Okay.
Minutes, all in favor? Aye.
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 Minutes are approved of all meetings. Okay, item four on our agenda, discussion following public hearing on application by Mine Hill Distillery to amend special permits. Okay. We pretty much know what's going on, it's pretty simple. Public hearings closed, but it's up to the five of us seated members if we want to discuss it amongst ourselves more. Personally, personally, I think it's it's all in order. Obviously, I had no questions on the application, it's understandable, it's a state thing. So I, right now, I mean, I can just call for a vote on this. First, we need a motion to approve. And then we.
The motion, if we accept this proposal by Mine Hill Distillery and take a two vote.
Do I have a second to that motion?
This is Kim, I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded to bring it to a vote. We will go around, everybody's got to give a reason.
Sorry, was that Dave making the motion? I couldn't tell.
Yes.
Yes, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Kim.
I'm going to vote yes to approve, and I think that it is going to be very good for the business district and brings it in line with the Connecticut state statutes and allows the business to proceed, you know, in the way that others are allowed to at this point as well in the same industry, I think that's important.
Very good, yeah. Candy?
I vote yes, this is a very reasonable request, we've been discussing this for a while now. It's a great business, it'll bring in more business in that area, I think it's just a plus all the way around for the town.
Thank you. Alan?
I, I vote yes, I, I think it's a minor adjustment and it, it is a no. I can't, I can't come up with anything negative, and I think it's a big positive.
Very good, thank you. David?
I'm going to vote in favor of the change, I think it's a logical extension to the business, but I think it's only positive for the town.
Thank you. And I, as well as the rest of you, vote in favor of this. I don't see any reason it's, will support the distillery. It's a state regulation, so to speak, to allow distillers to do this. And I think it's a plus, I think anything we can do to help things out in the business zone and help the distillery, it's a, it's a plus for Roxbury. So I'm in favor, and it looks unanimous to me, Karen.
Sorry, I didn't hear who seconded the motion to start with.
Candy.
Kim? Okay, Dave made the motion, Kim seconded, got it.
Correct.
Thanks. So it's unanimous.
It's unanimous, yes.
Great.
Guys, I'd like to thank each and all of you, it's, it's been a long and bumpy road, and no one expected COVID in the meantime. But when I get the permit, you're all invited for the first drinks. They're on me.
Very good.
Thanks, Eli, congratulations.
Thank you so much, guys. Good luck with everything else.
Good luck.
Okay. Bye.
All right. Item number five, ongoing review of zoning regs. And this brings us to, we've been kicking this around for the last few months, adaptive reuse of non-conforming barns. And basically, we have currently a regulation, and John Cody, you can step in here anytime to make sure I get the regs right. But if the building is non-conforming, any portion of a barn is within 50-foot front setback or the 30-foot side setback, any portion of that building, it, the whole building can't be changed. For an example, up where I work on Botched Hill, we have a, and I measured it today, 40 by 80 structure barn, it's a 40 by 80, it's quite large. And 10 feet of it is within the 50-foot setback, which means 70 feet of it is perfectly usable, but it's attached. According to our reg, you can't use any portion of that barn for anything, and it's going to make people say, well, if I can't do anything with it, I'm not going to fix it, I'm going to tear it down. And what I'm proposing, and it's entirely all of us together as a commission, is to allow the conforming portion, in my case, we're not going to do this, because we're not, we're, we're a horse farm. But if someone else had it, to allow the conforming portion to be alternatively used, even for housing, for rentals, apartments, whatever, somebody can take that 70 feet. Now, it's not, there's a lot of barns throughout town. Top of Weller Bridge, there's a barn that probably is, there, most of these barns are perpendicular to the road, because I have another barn that is parallel with the road. Because I have another barn that is parallel with the road, much larger. But the whole structure is within the fifty feet. So none of that could legally, currently be used and none of it's conforming. But if it's perpendicular to the road and you've got a good sizable portion of that barn, whatever portion is conforming. It doesn't have to be a large, if, if it's big enough for you guys to do something, or the owner to do something. The portion of the barn that's within the setback is flat out storage. No habitation, because I really feel it's a safety issue. If it's within the fifty feet, it's too close to the road for habitation. An office or anything like that, so. That's the adaptive reuse of non-conforming barns. The portion that's good, go ahead and use it. The portion that's not good, you can't use it anything but storage. And if the whole entire barn is in the fifty feet, then just storage. So that was, that's that one. Any thoughts?
John Cody, yeah, Jim, it should be pretty simple. I don't know, I think it does touch a lot of bases in the non-conforming stuff. I'll draft something up for the next meeting, in two weeks, I guess we'll have that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We just have to see where this touches, because it's going to go to a whole bunch of different areas, but it shouldn't be too hard to create something.
Just try to keep it as simple as we can, so everybody understands the conforming portion of the structure can be used. The non-conforming portion can't be used. How it's enforced, obviously through building permits or whatever. If you get a set of plans come through there and, and that ten feet of my barn has to be listed as storage and no habitation. Anyway, so yes, John.
Yeah, I think we get an affidavit from the, from any applicants on that.
Sure.
The non-conforming, you know, portion will not be utilized in that manner.
Correct. Yep. Anyway, the reason behind all this is twofold in my mind. To give the owners of these barns a reason to keep the barn, fix it up and use it. And also, we're, I think personally myself in zoning circles, constantly trying to create more housing. Affordable rental space, anything we can do to create more housing. So that's, that's that one.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
This is Kim. So I, I think that it's a good idea and. You know, for all the reasons you said and. I just wanted to, you know, state my support of that. And it does make sense, because, I mean, people can decide to tear them down anyway.
Right.
If it's something they don't want to do, but it might actually get them to think about how to utilize what they have and the historic value of that. Of that structure, so I, I think there's some good opportunity there.
Right, and it's, I haven't been driven around town to see exactly how many of these barns, but I believe. Because from my trip from where I work to my home, I see three of them. It's only two miles and I got three of these structures, so I'm sure there's more. Anyway, let's see what John comes up with, we'll write that up and always I try to keep it simple and straightforward. And it should be simple, if, if part of it's not, is conforming, use it. Because if you have a barn that's setting a hundred feet from the road, you can do anything you want with that barn.
Jim, do we want to do just the front setback, or do you want to touch base on the sides?
Side, I would go sides as well.
Okay.
Yep, setbacks, to me setbacks are sacred. And I would do side setbacks and front setbacks.
You got it.
Yeah. Then that leads us to here again, accessory apartments, accessory dwellings. To create more housing currently, as we discussed. Your accessory has to be, can only be fifty percent of your primary. And that's just crazy, because. If you live in an eighteen hundred square foot house like I do at home. My accessory can only be nine hundred square feet, or I could do the flip flop and have to build a thirty six hundred square foot home. And I'm not going to do either one of those. What I'm leaning towards here, and I know, Kim, you sent me something and I, I want to take a moment to apologize, I did not read what you sent me. I just, my email got filled up, I'll probably read it when I get home, but if you could, if you want to discuss that point that you made.
Could do that now.
Sure.
Can we do that? So what I did was, I took all of number fourteen, section fourteen, accessory apartments, and I rewrote it.
Okay, all right, I apologize, I didn't look at that. I know you did that, you said you were going to do it.
I'm a teacher, I can forgive a student for not doing their work. No, I'm serious, so let me just go through what I had, what I had done. So there are a couple of topics here that I thought needed to be reviewed. One of which was the whole concept of the guest house, which I feel is outdated with our current regulations. Guest houses were put in at a time when apartments weren't allowed. And we were getting people to promise that they weren't going to put a kitchen in, so it wouldn't become a, an apartment, which that is not enforceable.
Right.
I think our regulations should be enforceable and we can't make these, you know, requests and without being able to back them up. So with the change that we've made with having an apartment inside of the home and an apartment outside of the home. That, my suggestion would be to delete the whole guest house bit. Now, what people are able to do right now is to have a guest house and an accessory apartment outside the home. So we could, in discussion, talk about allowing two, if we wanted to, on a property. And so that guest house actually turns into that second apartment, so that is an option. The apart to this is what was brought up in the, the minutes. And that was, and I'm looking at it actually right now. My, the dot thing that I wrote, but I'm just going to read what I suggested. And it was based on what Bill had brought up too about the square footage. So, okay, so right now it says, "A secondary unit in an accessory building should have a minimum floor area of four hundred and fifty square feet and a maximum floor area of fifty percent of the floor area of the original unit." So that's the part that we're looking to change. So I wrote, "Instead, a secondary unit in an accessory building shall have a floor area that is lesser than," or, okay. Oh, lesser than or equal to the primary single-family dwelling with a minimum floor area of four hundred and fifty square feet and a maximum floor area of eighteen hundred square feet. And we can discuss percentages and whether it's equal to or less than or whatever, but.
Right.
Be lesser than, but. And then there was just some other language, you know, that was in there that we could talk about at some other point, but to make it uniform. But other than that, those are the two main topics that I thought we should talk about.
Kim, what sections are you, are you reading at the moment?
This is section fourteen.
I know.
I was, yep, I was looking, I was reading. Fourteen point three point four.
Okay.
And that was talking about the square footage.
Okay.
And then there were several areas that related to. The guest house, and that's fourteen point four.
Fourteen four, okay.
And then there's, it's all of fourteen point four.
If you wouldn't mind, if you could share that. The one that you've developed with me, that would be great. You can mail it to me.
Yes, I have, I, yes, I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Bill? Want to add anything?
Yes, Kim, just summarize what's more, you said a maximum of eighteen hundred square feet?
Yes.
And. It was supposed to be. Less than the main house?
Well, yeah, I wrote less than or equal to, but, you know, I think.
Would be simple for this to have just eighteen hundred, one of the research I did with Houz and whoever it was that I researched, said the optimum. Accessory building for a family of four with two dogs was sixteen to eighteen hundred square feet, period.
That's why I did eighteen hundred, it was based on your, what you had stated before, so I just did the higher number.
So it would be, would have easier just to say eighteen hundred, no other factors involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly.
No minimum size. I don't, I don't think it was, well, I guess.
Our regulations, this is Kim again, the, the regulations throughout state a minimum. And so it's going to be easier to make one change as opposed to altering and getting rid of all minimums.
That's true, you have a minimum and a maximum.
Yeah, because we don't want anything smaller than four hundred and fifty square feet, I think that's.
I think that's, that's just, I mean, what's the, what's the building permit now, what, there's a minimum square footage for a structure now, isn't it?
Yes. Four hundred and fifty square feet.
So that's.
For a building, for a building, I don't know that.
That's right in the regulations right now, so it doesn't have to be changed.
I think for habitable, it's eight hundred minimum.
This is specific, this is Kim again, this is specific to apartments.
Right.
How do you really distinguish it between apartment, apartment inside a home, right?
And, or an accessory building outside, so they're just stating, it's, the regulations currently state that anything that the minimum is four hundred and fifty square feet. So I just took it, I just left it from what was already listed.
Oh.
I can't change it, but.
Yeah, but question, if habitable is eight hundred. How can we say four fifty for an accessory apartment? That, that kind of doesn't make sense?
Well, I think what the eight hundred is, is for a freestanding building. And apartment is.
Primary residence.
It's a primary, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, but it says habitable, and to me, habitable is anything I can live in. An apartment I would think I could live in, whether it's accessory or not.
John Cody, the minimum size.
Say it again, John?
That's for the primary residence.
Okay.
Pretty much sums it up.
Okay, and, and the minimum for accessory is four fifty?
Correct.
In the primary residence, four fifty, outside of the primary residence, eight hundred.
Okay, within, I got you.
This is Kim. This is Kim, it does not say that. It's, it doesn't say eight hundred outside the house.
What about, this is Bill, what about just the house, I build a house on a lot, single freestanding house. Isn't there a minimum, there must be a minimum.
It's eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
That's for the primary residence.
So that would be, this is Bill, that would be appropriate to have a minimum of eight hundred for an accessory building.
Correct. Sounds fantastic.
That's what.
John?
I'm sorry, muted up, yeah, John Cody, that would be perfect if you did the minimum size eight hundred and then whatever, eighteen hundred. Make it flat, no percentages.
Keep it uniform, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, I, you're right, I, this is Candy, I wouldn't do the. Equal to, but no greater than. The primary residence, just, you know, min eight, max eighteen.
I like.
See, this is Bill, it'd be four fifty for apartment inside your house.
Right.
Better for outside building, accessory building minimum, and eighteen hundred for maximum, so it'd be three numbers. And you wouldn't have any of the sliding scale, greater than and less than, you would have to. Which doesn't add up most times.
Right.
You could build an apartment in your, add on to your home, it could be three thousand foot apartment. As long as it's meets all the other zoning and it's attached to your house.
Not with the changes, max is eighteen hundred if we make it that, if we change it to that.
But you're talking about an accessory house, I'm talking about an apartment. Is there any regulation that says maximum size on an apartment currently? Within a house?
I haven't recalled one of those.
Forty percent of the size of the house, isn't it, John?
I, I do believe so.
For interior and then fifty percent outside.
All right, well.
I'd leave the forty percent, it, I mean. The apartment can either be carved out of the current existing interior, or you can do a bump out on a house, but it can't be bigger than forty percent of the, of the original house.
Sure. Yeah. No, that's, I think that's the right direction. Get all these numbers, whether the apartment's inside, outside, up over your garage, or where, you know. If it's over the garage, it's going to fall under the same criteria as the four hundred and fifty square feet. And the forty percent of the garage. If it's inside the house, because a lot of people put an apartment over the garage. And if you totally build a separate structure, then it's eighteen hundred square feet.
That's pretty simple, this is Bill, that's pretty simple, it makes it fair for everyone involved.
Everyone. And then like, the guest house thing, just throw it out.
Yeah.
Throw it out.
No, this is Kim, do, do you think we need to replace it with something and, and say, I mean, is there any need? You think to have two apartments that are outside of the house, or no?
No, no.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. And the guest house thing, like you said, there's, as far as enforcing it, we're going to let these people build an eighteen hundred square foot structure. Forget the guest house, because they're going to. And we just don't need both.
AK, it's one of the same.
Yep, yep. So then nobody.
You can't have an existing guest house and build a separate. Then you'd have two separate buildings.
If you have an existing guest house, we might have to allow that person to keep the guest house. The, the, enforcing it's tough, because all they got to do is pop a kitchen in there and you got an apartment.
Yeah, wouldn't be too bad about the guest house if they come in, we could, most people that come in are open.
Yeah.
Discussion on the applications.
If, if somebody's already got one, we can't tell them, you got to remove it. And if they already got a guest house, I still want to encourage the eighteen hundred square footer, because I'm going back to creating more rentals. More living rentals in Roxbury.
But does that mean they start with the six hundred foot guest house and bump it out to eighteen hundred, or they build a separate unit?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you're going to rent a guest house, and I think we got to rent the, have something we can rent for permanent housing.
Oh, this is Kim, I think if people only have a guest house on their property outside of the primary residence, that this will allow them to then turn that into an apartment, if they want.
Yep, yep. All right, that's, I like that. So, Kim, you've written some language on this. Crunch the numbers, get the four hundred and fifty and the eight hundred and the eighteen hundred and the forty percent, and get them all in order so we can read it.
I will, I will do that.
Okay. I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction, because some of these regulations are just. Not, they're not usable, they're not, you can't live with them. Uh, okay, we're moving on.
Sorry, I moved inside because the mosquitoes are out there.
Wondered what you're swatting at there.
Yeah, those doggone mosquitoes, I'm telling you, they're killers, they're killers, I'm telling you.
So maybe, let's. Don's going to give us some wordage, verbiage on non-conforming barns.
Hi, I'm, I'm in, I'm in a meeting right now, so can I call you back?
Just by a mute.
Okay, all right, bye.
Yeah, John Cody, was that directed to me? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, you, you can get something on the non-conforming barns and we'll be in touch, just, you know.
We're, we're both on the same page, it's a simple.
Yes, yep, 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 for sure, and keep it simple is important, I think. All right, moving on. We need a ZEO report, Mr. Cody.
All right, I'll just briefly touch base on the active stuff. Mike Rice sent an application for his Beehive Business, he never. Mike Rice sent an application for his Beehive business. He never told us what category he wanted to be. So I had to send that back to him. I'm waiting for him to get back to me. Well, I'm taking forever, but we'll, we'll get that. The, the concern with that is we just don't want on-street parking, because it's right on Mallory, the one-lane road, and I had some complaints on that. Uh, another one, Dennis McDonald had an application to convert his barn to two, what we decided was two guesthouses. He called them. Uh, we denied his application. I'm sure he will come back with modifications, some explanation of stuff. That's pretty much it for the moment as far as hot topic items.
Okay. And how are we coming, uh, when you bring up Dennis McDonald and, uh, Mark Lowe's property? Is there some screening actually happening?
Uh, yes, actually, no, there, he sent me some photographs a while ago, a fence he was gonna make. He didn't move on that, so I just sent him a letter two weeks ago, something on that. NOV, I was, uh, we were asking for compliance, NOV would, you know, uh, request for compliance. If he doesn't do that, then NOV will follow. So we, we kind of lit a candle underneath him, so I anticipate something soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. Chairman's report, I have nothing. I think we're moving in the right direction on adaptive reuse and accessories. I think that's a huge item and that's all I had, uh, in my mind the last few weeks. Communications, uh, I believe we have none. Karen, I don't think.
Correct, no, no communication.
Okay. So with all that being said, if anybody has anything else they'd like to bring up, now's the time. If not, then, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, this is Kim. I motioned to adjourn.
Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motioned and seconded. Uh, all in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Productive.
Everybody.
Bye.
Thank you. Good night. Stay well.
Good night.
See you next month.
Okay, thank you again.
Bye, all. Bye-bye.